Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to January 3, 2018, meeting of the Dambler Bowl County Planning and Zoning Commission. I apologize for the delay in starting, but we didn't have a quorum, so we had to wait until we had a quorum. And I have no control over the room temperature, so that's an issue. Talk to the mayor. All right. As tradition, we'll begin with prayer. Bow with me, please. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the blessings of it. We thank you for the health you've given us today and let us live another day. We thank you for this community we live in and blessing us so wonderfully as you have. We thank you for this country we live in and all the freedoms we enjoy. We pray this day for our servicemen and women who continue to serve to protect our freedoms, that you would be with, bless and protect them, and bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Be with us as commission this day. Help us to make decisions that are the betterment for this community, the betterment for all those involved in all things we make. May they be in accordance with your will. Christ's name we pray. Amen. First item on the agenda is to approve minutes of the special call meeting of December 11, 2017.
Does that make the motion? We approve.
Terry moves. We approve. Jeff seconds. Questioner on the motion to approve. Hearing done. All in favor? Folks unanimous. Thank you. This time, I'd like to welcome Mary Beth Touchstone, who is a new member of the planning commission. She is taking the place of Dr. Bill Boss, who finished his term in the December meeting. We'd like to certainly welcome her and thank you for being here this morning. Also, I'd just like to say about Dr. Boss, if you were here at the December meeting, nothing was made mention of that being his last meeting. And normally, we would recognize a person as being their last meeting and give them thanks and so forth. But Bill had asked me personally not to do that. I know he has some personal issues, and I don't know if that was part of it or not, but he asked me not to do that, and I certainly respected that request. But at this time, Jenny, I'd like to have it entered into the minutes, and we certainly appreciate his time, his services, dedication, and all the quality work that he did in serving on P&amp;Z. And we really appreciate that and certainly going to miss him. So just wanted to share that in case there was a question about why we didn't recognize him. All right. Item D, financial report for November 2017.
Yep. Thank you. I'll just mention an item. Last month, our chairman pointed out something that I needed to correct. And as you guys will look at, you got a finance report that is slowly evolving to give you guys a better understanding of our finances month to month. And in fact, the budget committee is going to meet after this meeting, and we're going to continue this process of fine tuning the finance report. But what you see in the finance report, pretty much the headings, the month of November, November budget, year-to-date, year-to-date budget, annual budget percentage, that's something that our budget chairman, myself, we've been slowly, and Jenny, we've been slowly moving this finance report to a place I think just gives a better understanding of where we're at. But the interesting thing is page two of your budget, your finance report, down there in blue, Jenny's highlighted that in blue under total expenses, the $12,132, now correlates with the next document you see, which is, this is the actual transaction by detail for the month of November. So the very next page that was behind that finance report is kind of the paid bills list, prepaid bills list, things, all the expenditures we had for the month of November. And then that number exactly matches the November finance report. So what we've got is, we've got bills that come in, some we prepay, some are coming up the next month, obviously. And this is basically the register, and it shows you which checks were written, which things were spent. A lot, this looks like a lot, but a lot of this payroll stuff is broken into line items for our individual taxes and whatnot. So it's really not that many actual, it's payroll, it's insurance, it's a couple supplies, and obviously some filing fees. But then you see the $12,132.80 exactly matches the finance report number. So I think the better protocol into the future, and the chairman pointed this out last month, is really to accept the finance report formally and to authorize, give us authorization, basically, to pay the bills that really we've already paid in November, in a sense. All those things have already come past us, the payroll, individual things. And this gives you guys a detailed look of every expenditure item for the month of November. And then formally, you guys would be authorizing. But as you know, some of those things we have to pay when they come due, especially the payroll. So it's kind of hard to pay the future bills. This is, right now, the best process we've got, is we keep moving forward and fine tuning. This is to give you a line item list of the prior month. The disadvantage we have is, here we are in January, and it'd be great if we could show you the December stuff, but we have to close out December, reconcile the bank statements, and produce the report, and we won't have that done for another couple days. So you're looking at November and January. That's the real downside of this whole thing. But this gives you a detailed list here of everything. And so again, I think the difference this month would be if you guys can, would formally accept the finance report and the list of expenditures that were paid in the month of November.
Jeff moves. We approve.
I'll second it.
Mary Beth seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none. All in favor? Folks unanimous.
Thank you.
Letters of credit. Item E.
There's no specific item. It's placeholder this month. The summary is in your packet of the four cash bonds we're holding and the two active letters of credit. There was no movement on those in the prior month, but they're just in your packet if you have any questions.
May I ask about a cashed letter of credit?
Yes, ma'am. We require letters of credit to backstop public construction projects, whether they be subdivision or infrastructure like water and sewer replacement onto a property. So we actually require a letter of credit by developer to be posted. After so many renewals, the planning commission is required to cash those letters of credit or actually take that money. We put it in a standalone checking account. It's a secured account that only can be used. So those four items that you see, Clark's Run, Foxgate, Hunt Farm, and Maple Tree, those dollar amounts were actually cashed. That letter of credit was converted from that instrument to actually cash in our checkbook. And you can see the date they were cashed and the amount that we're holding. We've had a discussion a month or two ago about what are we going to do? How do we get these done? What responsibility do we have to finish those or the developer? But what's clear is we cashed the letter of credits after a few years, and at some point, we're holding the money. It's supposed to incentivize the developer to get done. Obviously, on some of these, it hasn't done much, and there's been some discussion on how are we going to finish them and whose responsibility it is, and when do we take the money and finish the subdivision? And is there enough money after that many years have gone by on some of those?
Okay. And at some point, will we also see a balance sheet with our financials?
We can do that. It is a separate checking account. That's our general operating account. We have two checking accounts. So the finance report you see is our general budget. We do have a separate checking account, and we can put a line item on there that shows the existing balance of these. And that's what it is right there, the 97, 778, 19. It's a standalone account with these four items. They can't be spent except on those projects. We couldn't spend any more than the allotted amount for each project either. And that's all built into our subdivision regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
We do need to address these at some point in the future. It's been brought up several times on how we get these done.
And what happens if they cost more than the amount of money we have?
We've talked about that. We feel the developers, their responsibility to finish them. Just because we called it doesn't mean it's our responsibility. We would, well, if we decided to finish it, we'd get a bid. We'd get a quote, bid. We'd see where we're at with the bid versus what we're holding. We either would have to come up with the money, we'd have to take action against the developer for the money, or we'd have to ask our city and county parent governments to assist us in financing those if they're important enough. But really, if this thing worked perfect, the project gets built in the timeframe, letter of credit's released, and we move on. I've had discussion with one of the developers, and he's at this point not motivated to complete them. So he feels, his personal opinion is, when we called the bond, we took the responsibility to finish it. That's not what the subdivision regs say. It says, "We called the bond, and developer's still responsible to finish it." So we're not sure where to go forward. We really just need to sit down with the developer and get a timeline on how we can get these done, to be fair to the property owners that are out there. It's good questions. Appreciate that.
Anything else on that? Item F, subdivision flats. Number one, Shelby Crawford, 1212 Shakertown Road.
You guys should have those at your seat. Again, they were mailed out. This one's pretty straightforward. The flat that you can see right there, it says a consolidation plot. And what is being consolidated, as you see, is Track One and Lot 3A, which are kind of on the southern side of your flat there. It also is restating 1212 Shakertown Road. So the surveyor has actually kind of resurveyed the bigger track there that you see to the north side. But what we're really doing is consolidating, and we're restating 1212 Shakertown Road. So technical review, looked at the plat. Everything was in line with our requirements. Mr. Carroll's here in the room. If you guys got any questions for him. Again, pretty straightforward on the plat consolidation.
Does that total area of 1.784 acres, does that stay separate, or is that becoming part of it?
Lot 32?
Yeah, 32.
It was separate.
Stayed separate.
Oh, it's consolidated into that, too? Well, that might be then one thing that threw me off, too, then. In the purpose statement, it says we're consolidating. Okay. That makes sense. Yep. It's all three. Is that right, Stephen?
Any other questions or comments?
I do have one question. I'm sorry. Just coming back from Houston, I noticed that a portion of this property is within 100-year floodplain. How do we, do we address floods and insurance or anything along those lines as part of our role here?
We do. And there's a plat coming up that's going to be very specific. It says a portion, there's a flood certification note that the surveyor has to put on. It says a portion of the property is shown here and does lie within 100-year floodplain is illustrated by flood insurance. And they just reference that panel and effective data, that flood, and then it's shown on the plat. What really, the details come in on what we can do in the floodplain then is tied into other regulations, our subdivision regulations, the city stormwater regulations. And again, some of the other surveyors may want to address it. I don't think we 100% limit development in floodplain. Other communities do. If there's floodplain, it's no build. But what I think we do is adhere to the normal practice, where if there is floodplain, and we're going to show you a plat in a second, it can be modified through a formal process through the federal government. So even though there is floodplain, it can potentially be usable at some point in the future. But it has to be noted on the plat if it is a, any portion is within the floodplain or, you know, noting where that is. And so the surveyor's note up there is, again, just housekeeping at this point as required by the subdivision regulations. And Mr. Carroll, I don't know if there's something specific on that floodplain on any of these lots that, it's really...
More to tell with the larger track.
Yeah.
It's just one real small corner.
Thank you.
And we're actually going to, a plat we're going to look at here in a second. We're going to get in some pretty good detail on one.
Okay.
Any other questions? Why move we approve? Terry moves. We approve. Second. And Jim seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Folks unanimous. Thank you. Item two, Volcano Industrial Foundation, 20.408 acres on Kentucky 34.
Make sure I got that one. All right. Yeah. I think these may be out of order in your packet. Is that not right?
No.
I'll make sure on mine. That's yours, right, Nancy? Yep. All right. Should be in the order. And again, this is the one with the floodplain we just talked about. So the chairman has the big version there. You guys had the copy, so it's hard to see. His version's got a better shade on it, and it actually can show what the floodplain is and what's not. So you see what's in blue, that shaded, that is what's in the floodplain. So almost these lots that we are redefining and moving around some lot lines here, mostly is in the floodplain. So it was a question in technical review, why are we creating these lots? What exactly are we doing? And are they even usable? So Track Seven that you see is redefining what's left of Track Seven. It is almost 100% in the floodplain. And then Track Six, which would be to the right side of that plat, is actually being created to create Tracks 6B and 6A. One of the questions in technical review is, wow, what can be done on those? They're almost, again, 100% in the floodplain. And there was a lot of discussion that floodplain can be changed, can be filled through a formal process, through the federal government, and ultimately can be used. And we talked about some examples in the community. But right now, if Tracks 6B and 6A that are being created, that you see right there, again, there's very little that could be done. Structure's placed because of the percentage of the lots in the floodplain. So we questioned Track 6A. You know, what's the purpose of this? Who would buy that? Or, you know, but I think the important thing is what the plat does, which is put a note on here so when we convey a track into the future, whether it be 6A or 6B, someone clearly understands that this track's in the floodplain. Could be a stronger note, maybe, but I guess clearly it's labeled. And Nancy's plat's pretty straightforward with how it shows that on the recorded version. It'll be pretty easy for someone to see that. Again, the Bull County folks are here. They may want to tell you why this was needed and what their game plan. But as far as a plating exercise that met our subdivision requirements, technical review kind of vetted everything we typically would look at. Plat met all our rules, and, you know, we didn't have any issue with it, other than the note that the floodplain consumes most of those three lots. Terry and Jim, we're on the technical review. I don't know if I hit that right or pretty much what we talked about. Again, I don't know if Nancy wants to say anything, or the folks from Bull County want to discuss that and give you guys a little more insight.
Steve asked us to put a note on there that they were unbuildable lots, the way it is now. My feelings are that whatever is built there, we'll have to come back in with a site plan. And at that time, they will show how they're going to get everything out of the floodplain. These are orphan lots that belong to the Volcano Industrial Foundation. They were created back in 1985. Obviously, nobody has wanted to build on those at this point in time, but there is a possibility that they may have a buyer for one of the lots. If the people from Dambler and Bull County will remember, back in the 70s and 80s, at the foot of Fourth Street Hill, there used to be, they used to have a surplus. Every year, it's there because it's the same creek as this one. And when Autozone went in, they built up where their building is now to keep it out of the floodplain. So it can be done. And we're asking that you approve the plat as is. Thank you.
Let me just add one thing. The reason I suggested the note, again, just my prior experience, I'm used to putting notes on plats. Better notification, the better. The chairman, again, has a blueprint version of that plat, which, when it's recorded, will look like that. But as you know, if somebody was a prospective buyer of Track 6A, and in this case, we got a reputable property owner, so it's probably not as likely. But when you go and look at the copy we made, and if you went to the PVA, you got online and you saw the plat, and you're like, wow, look there, there's four acres on the corner of two roads. Looks pretty good. You go to the PVA, you make a copy, you take this home. What we want is to make sure the consumer, the end buyer, understands all what we've got going on here. And that is not a building lot today. It would have to go through some very formal process to get, before you could even fill it, you'd have to go through a process through the federal government to eliminate the floodplain. Then you could fill it and ultimately build on it, as Nancy just described. My suggestion was put the note on the plat, not a building lot of record. And then at that point, when they fill it, we can take the note back off the plat. But the fear is that someone buys a lot, doesn't know, they just bought a lot consumed with floodplain, think they have a development opportunity, turns out they don't. Not every time can you achieve federal government approval to fill in the floodplain. You can do it most of the time, but there are times when you fill those forms out, send them in, they say that one's not going to work. So we just want to make sure that the plat does what it's supposed to do, which is notify into the future all the particulars of a particular lot or area of our county. I think Nancy's plat is very clear with the floodplain, but when you see how the copies turned out, you could see we're into the future, you know, we wouldn't want someone to buy a lot 6B or 6A and think there was an opportunity and realize there's a lot more process. Again, we have a very reputable owner here, and there's no fear that they're not going to let someone know what they're buying. But this can happen, and it's just something, you know, there's no harm in just putting a note on there. Not a building lot of record until floodplain is revised. But we've got it shaded on the plat, and we all agree that was good enough for today.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Well, I can't tell from my copy, but so the note did not make it on?
I'm sorry.
Did the note get added? The note did not get added.
I asked that not to put it on there.
Oh, okay. There it is.
Why move we approve? Terry moves. We approve.
I'll second.
Mary Beth seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve.
I think, if it's in the floodplain, I think it needs to be on there. Was it harmed by putting it on there?
It's on there, all that dark shaded, and there's a note down there that says that.
I guess, again, the note that's in the floodplain clearly means, a note said not a building lot of record means we don't build a building, and it doesn't get missed, just like setting a setback. I think in this situation, again, it's hit or miss. Into the future, it's just something we may want to address, how we put notes on plats. They are helpful. When you look up plats, we looked up one yesterday. Sure would have been nice if there was a note on this plat about this setback issue we were dealing with yesterday. Notes help. And in this case, I think, again, we got a reputable owner, and I feel pretty good about it.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Folks unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Item three, Volcano Industrial Foundation, plat for approval of subdivision plat number two for Lot Six of Hunt Edition, 74.229 acres.
Thank you, guys. This item and the next one are related. As you guys know, we had a zone change last month. A lot of public scrutiny on that. And what we're doing tonight, today, sorry, is actually creating the lot that you see on the left side of your plat, which would be Phase One of the distillery project that we talked about last month. Turns out, it's 29 acres and some change, as you can see on the left side or west side of that plat. At the same time, the Bull County Industrial Foundation is also conveying a small piece of land to Wilderness Trail, Trace, I'm sorry, that is 11.476 acres to make their lot a little bigger. So the plat is actually, again, creating Lot 19, and Lot 6C is being added to the Wilderness Site. So you can kind of see those, Kendall's here. If you guys have any questions, technical review looked at it pretty straightforward. And again, what it does is, as the next case is, is the actual Phase One of the site plan approval and creates this first lot that is, assuming, being conveyed to the new distillery owner, which, again, would be the 29.284 acres that we just zoned last month. Glad to answer any questions about that.
Why move we approve? Terry moves. We approve.
I'll second it.
Mary Beth seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve.
Is this the only site plan that has to be filed before they can build on it?
No, they, that's the next case. This is the plat to create the lot. The site plan approval is next, and that would be the actual Phase One development to physically build. There'd still be another approval even after the site plan approval, which would be a zoning permit and a building permit. So there's still some more. This just creates the lot to be able to convey the property off the parent track to the new owners.
Any other questions?
I don't have a photographic memory, but I thought when our discussions with zone change that they were talking about using 40 some lot acres.
That's correct. It was, it was talked about, Phase One would be approximately 40, 42 is 142 acre and some change, zone change that we did. And there was talk about Phase One and Two. Kendall can address this, but I guess when they went out and did the survey, created the lot, what's being conveyed there that kind of is the leg before it widens out, comes out to this 29 and some change. I guess there was just more some assumption that where the property flared out, that it was approximately 40 in the southern piece and 100 in the back. And this is what it actually comes out to be, right there where it widens out.
Here are the questions. Hearing not all in favor? Folks unanimous. Under G, item one, IJW Whiskey, Volcano Industrial Foundation, plat for site plan on 29.284 acres at 4301 Leavenon Road.
Thank you. Again, this one's related right to it. The lot that you just looked at now has buildings on it to show you what is the Phase One Site Plan Approval, now labeled as IJW Whiskey. And interesting enough, and credit to the industrial folks and the new property owner, we had a lot of discussion with the zone change about the entire property, Phase One, Phase Two, a lot of discussion about traffic and access. And what they've done with this Phase One Approval is just simply show what the plan is to build as truly Phase One, which is the three rickhouses, some travel ways that would connect kind of cross-country to Wilderness, no driveways out to 34, no access, because at this point, the presentation center that was shown on our concept plan, really now this becomes possibly a three-phase project, where Phase One is just going to be these three rickhouses. They would come in later at the point the presentation center is ready to be built. And there's some discussion with the state, because there's still been no guidance about access on 34. They would come back later and revise the site plan when they know what they can do for access, and when the presentation center, time-wise, is ready to be built. And then, of course, Phase Three would be the option or the growth to the rear for the other rickhouses and distillery. So again, I put a note on my document when we went into technical review. I put nice touch, just to mention to these guys, I thought it was an appropriate way to move forward with Phase One. After so much discussion about access, we, at least for today, can take that off the table and move forward with what truly is Phase One, which is construction of these first three rickhouses and travel ways. And you can see everything interconnects to the east with the neighboring property. And we'll just, we'll figure all this out as we move on into the future. And there would have to be an amendment to this site plan, obviously, to put the presentation center on it and any other future access points. So this truly is just Phase One, the building of these first three rickhouses. Everything else on the site plan, went through technical review, met our requirements, was in good shape. Kendall's here, and the Industrial Foundation folks, and Jody's back, if you guys have any questions for them in relationship to this first site plan and the zone change approval.
Kendall or Jody, would you know if there's a possibility that the KLD would not grant an access road?
Actually, we just received our growth permit yesterday. So I'll let Kendall speak to that.
I don't have a copy of it. I didn't know you'd gotten that.
I got it yesterday. We just have to file it on.
So it was approved the way we applied for it. So there you go. I mean, it's, we, they were fully aware of the development plan for the entire 140 acres, so they know how much traffic's going to be generated by the development if it were to, you know, reach the point of ultimate build out.
So they have granted approval for access?
Sounds like it. So the Volcano Industrial Foundation would post a bond to cover the value of the improvements on the state right away, and we could move forward with construction of it.
Mr. Chairman, if it makes the commission feel better when we met with the chief...
And there would have to be an amendment to this site plan, obviously, to put the presentation center on it and any other future access points. So this truly is just phase one, the building of these first three rick houses. Everything else on the site plan, went through technical review, met our requirements, was in good shape. Kendall's here, the industrial foundation folks, and Jody's back if you guys have any questions for them in relationship to this first site plan and the zone change approval.
Kendall or Jody, would you know if there's a possibility that the K L D would not grant an access road?
Actually, we just received our growth permit yesterday.
Okay.
So I'll let Kendall speak to that.
I don't have a copy of it. I didn't know you'd gotten that.
We got it yesterday. We just have to file it on.
So it was approved the way we applied for it. So there you go. I mean, it's, we, they were fully aware of the development plan for the entire one-hundred-forty acres, so they know how much traffic's going to be generated by the development if it were to, you know, reach the point of ultimate build out.
So they have granted approval for access?
Sounds like it. So the Bull County Industrial Foundation would post a bond to cover the value of the improvements on the state right away and, and we could move forward with construction of it.
Mr. Chairman, if it makes the commission feel better, when we met with the chief district engineer from District Seven for the Department of Highways and another staff member from D O H, they referenced the fact that Kendall had hit it spot-on as to where we had platted the entrance about eighty feet towards Danville to the east, that that was the best site distance location rather than even moving it further east, much less trying to align an intersection at Allen Springs Cross Pike. So they suggested that the best entrance was exactly how Kendall had designed it and particularly with the site distance information that was provided, the study that was provided at the rezoning.
Thank you.
I guess my question, I have a question. Okay, so when this was presented to us, it was, my understanding was they were going to go ahead and build the welcoming center or whatever. And how many rick houses were there? Did you all propose originally?
I think there were seventeen on the conceptual development plan.
Yeah, but the first phase.
The first phase? Well, we presented, at the zone change, we presented as a whole development so that there were no hidden phases, there were no, you know, it would have been a whole lot easier for us to have just presented three rick houses. But seventeen rick houses and a presentation center could be built on this property, you know, as was presented on the, in the zone change or some, you know, adjustment to that. But it doesn't have to be, I mean, the zone change doesn't hold us to just seventeen. I mean, if it were eighteen.
The presentation that was made to us, and I'm not getting into the seventeen because I understand that was, I think that was made perfectly clear that that was, may never happen. But as far as the presentation center, and I may be wrong, I thought there was more rick houses in the original proposal.
It was three.
Just three.
Yeah, the first phase that they showed was presentation center and three. This is really just sort of of the seventeen. That's, that was just, those are the same three, right? They're on the seventeen. Where that phase line might be, might be slightly, wasn't there. So, but yeah, I think there was three on the first phase. Now, the access has shifted, right? The driveway locations, that cross.
It looks different.
It looks different.
It's the same function, but it's, once we got into detailed grading plans and things, you know, the.
Yeah, just, the building brands were slightly adjusted from what you saw on the conceptual development plan. The driveways might be shifted slightly, but that was just a result of trying to balance earthwork and making it feasible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Your motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Mayor Beth moves we approve?
Hold a second.
Terry seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you, Kendall, Jody. Under New Business Budget Committee, no report. They're going to meet afterward. Is there anything you need to report on that, Stephen?
There's no budget committee report, but we have two items we'd like to present right now under New Business, if it's okay, because they are financial-related.
Okay.
And they weren't specific on the agenda, but they do tie into what the budget's about. One of the items relates to our insurance. And I'm going to pass this out to the guys real quick. Three-page document here. These are very timely and we need to act on them. So here's what's going on. Our insurance is, and this isn't healthcare, this is our kind of operating auto liability, officer's liability, kind of our housekeeping, crime, those things time out December thirty-first. What you have here is a three-page document and the carrier we've been using for a number of years. You see here, the first one is Bradshaw and Well out of Paducah. We've had them for several years. And you can see this is our two thousand and eighteen quote. Well, when I got this quote in here, you see our insurance for next year would be ten thousand four-four-two-nine-two. I decided to do a little shopping, checking around. The auto seemed a little high. I talked with Bradshaw Well and just made sure I understand what all insurance. And you see, we have several kinds of insurance. So I basically called around, talked to the city. They gave me some direction and got a quote here from Johnson and Pullman, which is a local company. That's the next two pages. And you can see those same insurances would be substantially cheaper if we changed carriers. So the agent we've been using, again, has been Bradshaw Well for several years. I've talked to them. Terry met with me. The budget committee didn't formally come together, but we looked through these quotes. And what this would do is this would save us approximately thirty, twenty-eight percent in insurance, but from a budget standpoint, it's almost a ten thousand dollar savings from our actual budgeted item. So as you can see, they're listed a little different, but the auto's clearly cheaper. The D and O is interesting. That's the directors and officers liability. That's what covers you guys and us as a staff in case we err or we harm somebody by decisions we make. Bradshaw and Well gives us million-dollar coverage, but there was two incidences a year. Johnson and Pullman or through Cincinnati or the Cincy Group, it's still a million-dollar coverage, but it's only one incident a year. Now, the likelihood of you guys getting sued could happen, it could happen any day. It's more on the staff if we get out, give out bad information or, you know, we err and cause someone harm. But you guys are protected as board members. That's your liability. Found out through the city. The city also carries coverage for their members, their appointed members, and we carry them as a complete board and not a hundred percent sure what the county's policy covers. So historically, we have paid this bill to Bradshaw and Well of approximately ten thousand dollars a year for all these coverages. And so now you've got two things to compare, and what I need is direction on if you want to stay with the current company, if you give me authorization to enter into contracts with Johnson and Pullman, which these would be the, one's called Cincy PAC and one is Cincinnati Insurance for the D and O. These time out on the thirty-first as well as our workers' comp. Now, workers' comp is actually listed on the Bradshaw and Well because they're the agent of record. It actually is an independent insurance through K E M I. We've already got that bill and paid that. That goes really through a different group and you just have an agent of record. So to compare this a hundred percent to a hundred percent, you got to take the two Johnson-Pullman and add another sixteen hundred dollars, and then that's the true comparison number between the ten thousand four and the other. So it's going to come in right around seventy-eight hundred dollars. As opposed to ten-four, it'd be about seventy-eight. So again, it's about twenty-eight percent savings if we go with the other company. Clearly, the auto's cheaper. One interesting thing on this Bradshaw and Well, under property, this year, it's actually quoted as renters' insurance style. But in prior years, we've actually been carrying property insurance. And when I called them and said, hey, why do we have property insurance? They said, well, that's on your building. I said, we don't own the building. We're renters. And they said, well, we didn't know that. So we've been paying on property insurance, but they re-quoted it this year more like renters' insurance. So it went substantially down. It's still, compared to compare, it's in the same ballpark, but we've, again, I don't know why I did it, but when the bill showed up, I just started calling and asking some questions on what we were paying and why we're paying, why we had seven kind of policies. But they all make sense. Again, we need something on the car, we need coverage for liability, we need workers' comp. The renters' insurance is questionable considering what we are and how we function. But, so there's the quotes. I wanted to show them to you guys today and get some guidance from you guys on which direction you want to go. Terry and I have drilled down on this pretty good. Scott Burks is who I've been talking to locally and Jared Morgan's who I've been dealing with with Bradshaw and Well in Paducah.
So on the directors, excuse me, on the directors and officers' insurance, under the current coverage, you have two occurrences totaling a million?
Million-dollar coverage, million-dollar per incident. The current one is a million dollars. What they explained to me is Phil. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing. On the current policy, it's a million per occurrence and up to two occurrences.
Per year.
Per year.
Yeah.
And then on the Cincy one, it's one occurrence.
Million dollars.
Up to a million dollars.
Yeah. It's interesting, I called Jared at Bradshaw and Well, so we decided, let's try to quote these the same. And he said, well, Philadelphia group that you have currently won't do less than two occurrences because they deal with a lot of cities where you have police officers and other things and things can go wrong in the course of a year. They won't do less than two occurrences. So the minimum policy you can get through Philadelphia is a million dollar per incidence, at least two occurrences. If you want twenty occurrences, you could do that. Going through Scott at Johnson-Pullman, he said a million dollars is what the Cincy Group recommends for governments as the claim limit, but the one occurrence fit more what our operation is, more what they, that group provides for planning commissions and other boards that aren't out in law enforcement and hazardous-type functions. Doesn't mean we couldn't get sued tomorrow for a million or ten million, but that, we'd have that million-dollar coverage, one occurrence per calendar year. So it's hard to compare the two. We tried to give them a quote at both ways, and the two companies just provide different style coverage. So again, Terry, you want to add anything in there? We learned a lot about insurance.
We just talked about was the difference between the two million and the one million. And it's one of those things where one million, you know, could be too much and two million could not be enough. You know, you just don't know what's going to happen. We've never been sued, but, so I guess we're kind of, I'm comfortable going with the recommendations of Johnson-Pullman's firm, which they say, looking at what they do to other city governments and planning commissions, that one million dollars would be appropriate for our business.
I like saving money. So that saves, saves substantial amount of money, too.
And in terms of your cash flow, you might also, if we do go with the Johnson-Pullman, you might check with them and see if they want to split your payments over a period of time because there are time, you know, in terms of cash flow.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's easier to push that way.
Well, when we talked about this, and I've heard this kind of cash flow issue in the winter, but funny enough, the budget item, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for insurance, actually seventeen thousand between the two types of insurance. Our actual bill last year was in the ten thousand dollar range, it's still in the ten thousand dollar range, but we budgeted a little high. So when you look at the budget, you go, wow, seventeen thousand dollars. But this case, the way this PAC has broke out, we've already paid the workers' comp, which was sixteen hundred. These two together are only going to be about five thousand dollars. If the bill came in tomorrow, that's not a problem for us to pay that in January. And they said we can do installment payments if we choose to, but then there's a little bit of a fee on that. But the total insurance right now between workers' comp, auto, all these coverages would be right around seventy-eight hundred dollars as opposed to what we were paying, which was ten-four, and the budget number was seventeen thousand in the budget. So it's about ten thousand dollar savings on the actual budget and thirty, twenty-eight percent savings in actual last year's bill to this year's bill. And we deal with the local, local folks, which is great. But again, both companies are reputable, both guys are very helpful, and it's really your all's call.
So I guess I would make the motion that we give Steve the authority to go ahead and change insurance carriers for the cost savings and going with Johnson and Pullman, you know, versus the current carrier out of Paducah.
Most have been made to go with Johnson and Pullman for insurance.
I'll second it.
Mayor Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
And could I add that, that let Terry call the guys in Paducah?
Who has to make that call?
We do not have a personnel committee report.
Yeah, we got one more item under the finance. Sorry.
Oh, we do? I'm sorry.
So what we're going to do now is ask that we do a minor budget amendment mid-year here. The budget committee's getting ready to meet here in a few minutes, and we're going to start on next year's budget. But we thought it was timely to bring you a budget amendment. We've done some forecasting, and what you've got is our actual budget from last year. In the format, it was passed. We're going to change the things a little bit for next year, but these are the categories. What you see in red and underlined, just fine-tunes those categories a little bit better definition. We now know our carryover. So let me just walk you through a few items and tell you why we think we need to do a budget amendment mid-year here. I numbered these items on the right so we can, I can just quickly identify them. But the first thing onto the revenue side, item number nine, our zoning fees. We budgeted fifty-six thousand dollars. We're at about the twenty thousand dollar mark mid-year. That number seemed a little high, so we're going to roll it back down to be conservative. Just seems like a better number. Fifty-six was, you know, good thing to shoot for, but I don't think we're going to get there. But if we trend better in the third quarter, we'll come in and fix it. But forty feels better as a more realistic number. But jumping on down to item fourteen, clearly that drops our revenues down. But as you move on down to item twenty-one, our carryover is much higher. So in the budget, we put eighty-one thousand dollars in our carryover, projected carryover. The audit showed our carryover was actually ninety-eight thousand three twenty-five. So funny enough, if you look at line item twenty-two, budget to our amendment, we're within a thousand dollars or so total revenues. Everything's pretty much still spot-on there. As you move on down.
Let's just clarify on the carry forward, why there is a difference between what we had budgeted and what the audit showed. When we did the original budget, we had roughly, what, fifteen thousand?
Seventeen.
Seventeen thousand dollars that we'd been setting aside to purchase a new vehicle when the current vehicle died. And we were not showing that in the carry forward. We're showing it as a separate side account set aside. And then, two things have happened. One, Steve has decided if, when we do come to replace the vehicle, we will lease and not buy. So we don't really need to be taking that money in to create a fund to buy a new vehicle. And secondly, the auditor said it was, that should, that needed to be included in the carryover.
It was carryover.
So the dollars were there, we just didn't have, we had to classify it in a second account to purchase a new vehicle when the current one died.
Yep. And the city's actually said their lease fleet, their fleet's now a lease fleet, and so we could probably piggyback on a vehicle. We got a good vehicle, though. We got lots of years left on that. It's pretty low miles. We were joking around the other day, we think, last time we got an oil change was in March, we might need an oil change. Went out, looked at the odometer, we've only driven four hundred miles since March. So, yeah, we got a good vehicle and we're not putting a lot of miles on it. So, so we don't need an oil change, number one, and not after four hundred miles of use, but, so, yeah, I don't think we're going to need a vehicle right now. So we're kind of re-appropriating the money. But Terry's right, the carryover and the auditor confirmed this. That is ninety-eight three twenty-five, that's the actual number in the audit. It's now in our budget. So the reason why it's important that we put this in here, and we've been talking about some things, let's move down to expenses. Attorney fees, I'm lowering that from fifteen thousand to ten and twenty-five hundred to zero, and I'll explain that in a second. These are going to be more the attorney's fees for these routine meetings. And we're on target to stay in that ten thousand dollar range. And there's an item later on that I'm going to show you that has become a legal escrow for future problems that we all might be, we understand we might be anticipating. So that just fine-tunes the legal. But the big one then, line item thirty, is the insurance stuff we just talked about. You can see right there, that's a ten thou, almost a ten thousand dollar savings on what we just talked about. You flip the page, the next big item that's a big amendment is really line thirty-two. And that's our new copier and our technical agreement with the bluegrass I had to get these maps done. So we wanted to make sure we can pay those guys and move forward with our map project. And we got a copier now leased, that's annual. So that gets the office stuff a little more in line. Next year's budget is going to look totally different. We're going to go more line item, contracts are going to be organized. These items are basically alphabetized, I think, as far as expenditures go, so really don't flow in a very good way I would want to see the budget. They're just A through whatever. But we're going to organize the expenditures a little different next year. So line item thirty-two is a substantial increase, but it's stuff you guys already approved, the bluegrass contract and the copier lease. So that gets those kind of on the books. Line thirty-three was interesting to me. We had five thousand dollars down for vehicle maintenance. I don't know what that would be, anticipate what that would be. We lowered that more to a thousand dollars. Salaries are kind of in line at this point. We'll reassess those after the third quarter. But the big items are down at the bottom. If you guys look at lines forty-six and forty-seven, these are substantial change in our budget philosophy. I left the other terms. There was a term in line forty-six, it was called vehicle depreciation, and that was three thousand dollars. And what we actually, what we were doing was putting three thousand dollars away each year for that new vehicle that then we would transfer into that other checking account that had seventeen thousand. So it really wasn't depreciation, it was really a new vehicle replacement fund or vehicle escrow. What I want to call this now is construction or legal reserve, and that really is all the extra money. And you can see there's over fifty thousand dollars there. I think we need a legal reserve for various reasons. We also have some subdivisions that may need to be completed. So right now, it's just a placeholder of extra money. And it's fifty-one, five, six, five. The term can change. Next year's budget, we may call it something else. It flows right into the issue about our fees and revenues because what we truly need is the next item forever, which is line forty-seven, which is. forever, which is line 47, which is truly an operations reserve. There was a little note next to that, 25% is recommended, and the number was a, well, you can figure what 25% of that, where that came from. I've talked to the city and the county. They're not okay with the 25% reserve. They think something more reasonable, 10%, one month, eight and a half percent is more reasonable for small agency. I made it 10%, which based on expenditures, rolls that down from $57,000 to 23,274. So, it's interesting, the budget now is more fine-tuned in expenses on what we know the expenses are and will be. And those two funds, 46 and 47, if we don't touch a dollar, everything comes in spot-on, there's your carryover for next year, right there. But I think into the future, having a 10% operation reserve is smart business-wise. You need to have some reserve. This other fund, we've got it today. If we don't have it five years from now, we'll figure that out. But, again, we just called it, it's a placeholder, construction or legal reserve, just to put the money somewhere. It's very visible, and the bottom of this is a zero. So, this is our mid-year budget amendment. It formally amends the budget until the third quarter, then we'll reassess our fees. And, again, the Budget Committee's getting ready to get together, talk about next year's budget, and this is a good jumping-off point for us now that we've projected everything mid-year. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but this is, lets us pay, the auditor, by the way, his was a tad bit higher, pay on our copier and some of these housekeeping things by formally amending the budget.
So, if you didn't amend the budget, you would not be able to make some of the payments that exceed the budget amount?
I think we could, because, but the way the categories are structured, I feel a little nervous about it. You know, I think we have authorization, the budget gives us authorization to spend money. So, if you got it specific and it says the auditor's $3,500, then yes, if we pay the auditor 38, we've gone beyond the authority, I feel, to write the check. The budget clearly gives me now authority to pay him his $3,800. I think if we had an emergency bill, we could do that and come in and fix the budget after the fact, but I like to fix it before we spend the money. I think what this does is this tells us what we can't go past, but clearly, if tomorrow, we had a vehicle maintenance issue, let's say, came up and was $1,100, I think clearly, I would probably come explain to you guys, hey, we're outside the budget category by $100. Can we buy some tires or transmission or whatnot? But I think what's best is try to project those, get the budget right, and stay within the categories, and then look at it every single month and just make sure we're staying on, just like your household budget. If electric bills are going to shoot up this winter, you can leave $200 in there and pretend it's not going up, or you can put the exact amount. But I like the budget to be as tight as we can. But, again, I don't feel comfortable spending the money without your all's authority in the budget. So, the copier, the bluegrass ad, and the auditor were not in line with the expenditures that we got coming in. And the auditor bill is actually waiting right now.
Well, I will say that from a non-for-profit accounting standpoint, I understand exactly why you're doing the budget adjustment. From business management, I wouldn't do a budget adjustment mid-year. So, they're two different philosophies.
It is. The city just did one. I mean, city's doing two. What you don't want to do is do a fourth quarter cleanup, so then the auditor, nice and clean. But cities typically do amendments, because our revenues are going to flow up or down. I mean, we put $56,000 as a targeted zoning, and we're not going to get there. So, it inflates everything, including expenditure categories. Maybe next year, if we get the budget a little more tight, spot-on, then maybe we don't have to do that. But in my experience, I've always had to do at least a mid-year budget amendment, based on how our fees are trending. And then expenditure categories usually are pretty spot-on if you forecast them right, but you never know what could happen during the year.
Yeah, I understand.
We just talked about getting sued. What if we did get sued tomorrow? We have deductibles. Clearly, those deductibles would probably come out of those reserve accounts, and we would come and ask you guys to, even though the money's there, make sure we understood we're getting ready to spend some of that reserve. Plan is to never spend a reserve unless we have, you know, a situation where we need to.
Thank you.
Terry pointed out a great issue, though, and this is, this is good financial management. The big, big picture, if you guys look at what our actual revenues are, which are line 20, and what we spend, there's the big issue, that if we had no carryover, you know, think the worst-case scenario, we have no carryover, we're not having a great year fee-wise. If, what is our actual line 20 going to be in the worst-case scenario, which right now is around $200,000, and what do we spend annually on expenses? What we need to get in line is lines 45 and line 20 forever. And know that we don't have to worry about fee trends, you know, if we had solid revenue source. So, we're really close. We're really close. But what we're doing is living off that carryover each year just a tad bit. So, but, again, that's why you keep a reserve account, and hopefully, in a perfect world, that just rolls around every single year, that 10%, and that makes the difference. So, I appreciate Terry looking at that. And, again, what we do is we formally make this amendment, and this would be the jumping-off point for next year's budget. So...
Do we need a motion to accept this, or?
Yeah, we would.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept it.
Motion made to accept. Mary Beth, second by...
Got to leave.
Jeff seconds. Questions discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none. All in favor? Vote unanimous.
Jeff needs to go, so I'll make it real quick. The other items of New Business are not big deals, but the committee, one, is this one I want to mention real fast. All the other items are just placeholders. There's nothing there we need to talk about. Committee assignments, though, again, we've got some new members, some that have gone off. We talked about this a month or two, but our main committees are Budget, Personnel, Technical Review, and the Advisory Committee. It's ultimately the one that's going to look at all these documents. So, I just want to make sure, let our chairman give Mary Beth a role on a committee, asks that everyone want to serve on their same committees, because now we have a couple vacancies. So, not sure Personnel right now, Personnel, Budget, and Technical Review are kind of two or three-man committees. It's really what you guys want to do.
And what is it that the Advisory Committee does?
The Advisory Committee's a new one that I suggested, that I would like that to be kind of a high-level committee that's going to look at kind of process things. Once we get the zoning ordinance fine-tuned, the subdivision regs, the Advisory Committee would sit down and look at those documents and help us bring recommendations forward to the Planning Commission. Ultimately, it might bring some county and city officials into the, into the room, too, to talk about some of these more big policy directives. Our inter-local agreement is a perfect one, how we fund the Planning Commission, our relationship with the other cities. That's the inter-local agreement. That's one I'd like the Advisory Committee to take on right away. Personnel does what they do, which is they just do things monthly, and Budget meets to do the budget. Technical Review meets every month, which right now is Jim and Terry. So, again, not sure if anyone wants to shift or move, but would like to just make sure we got everyone active on these committees that we're going to use pretty much every month. So...
Do we need to get that done today, or do we need to wait?
We could wait till next month. Advisory Committee's probably not going to meet in January, and the Budget Personnel's ready to go.
I might wait until they get it back here.
Yeah, not everyone's here. That's true.
Well, can we reach out to, like, everybody can be made aware and ask them to just get back with you or with Terry?
I could do that. I could send an email and just say, hey, here's all our formal committees, and make sure who wants to participate on what committees. The chairman's kind of, like I said, Budget Personnel's kind of already set, but we can swap people around. Technical Review right now has a vacancy with Dr. Boss leaving. Jim has stepped on Technical Review, maybe a third wants to participate on that very exciting committee.
Well, Vince and I, Vince and I aren't on any committees.
Vince and you aren't on any committees. David's on. So, yeah, I agree. Yeah, that's why we want to talk about. We can do it next month. Or I'll send a reach out to everyone and tell you here's the committees.
Do that before next month.
Yeah. That would be everything.
Anything else on that? Okay, I have one more item I'm going to bring up, and I wanted us to discuss it today, but I'd like to have everyone here before we actually discuss it. So, I've had a request for us to discontinue the prayer prior to starting the meeting. I just wanted to make those commissioners that are here aware of that, and I'd like to, at the next meeting, hopefully, we'll have everyone here, and then bring that before the commission, and let the commission decide on that request. Any other good for the order?
Just check real quick, Terry. You okay with that finance report, kind of where we're going with that at this point? We're going, Budget Committee's going to talk about that after the meeting, too.
Sure.
Slowly fine-tune how many you sign checks and some little housekeeping things.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. Terry moves. We adjourn. Jim seconds. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.